Hi, everybody. You wish to have sort of more than five concert, two new concerts. Thanks. I have no one upstairs. You want to be first?
We definitely can load up yourself.
It would be a roll call.
Roll call, I think so.
Marlene Edwards.
I'm here.
Lattice Cooper.
Here.
Michael Ferguson.
Here.
Richard Horgan.
Absent call.
Jeanelli's here. Patrick Johnson.
Here.
Fraser.
Right.
David.
David.
David called.
Kathy Malonero.
She's still.
And Rob, Professor.
Professor.
Holly Brown.
Professor.
Even though she had to leave the hall. Thank you. We're recognizing people.
Yes, I'd like to take this opportunity to have, to introduce to the board new administrators, or administrators in new positions, if you can say it that way. First, I'll begin with our broad view principal, Edie Thomas. Edie. Edie. She left Broadview and went to Danbrook and went home again.
Yes.
Sharon Apple, principal at Danbrook School. Is it East Hartford?
Yes.
East Hartford. Prior to that, where were you, in Brookville, was it?
Newtown.
Newtown.
Close to town.
Close to town, back home, so welcome.
Thank you.
And principal of Danbury High School, Van Donovan. That's impressive. And I'm glad to have him as general principal. Dawn Barnes is here now at Shelter Rock. She's teaching tonight. She'll be here next week.
Okay.
Welcome everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you, and good luck, everybody, and thanks for being here. Next on the agenda, public participation. Is there anyone? Do you have anybody?
Nope.
No?
Anyone mind a town?
All right, we'll start, we'll do the roll. Anyone in the first row that would like to speak? Anyone in the second row? Third row? Fourth row? No one is speaking, all but Shane. Okay. We'll be forward. Consent calendar. In church?
The Lord of Education approves the items on a consent calendar. Exhibit sixteen dash one-one-one through sixteen dash one-one-three is recommended.
Sir?
Second row. Any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes? Thank you. Is there an employee representative in the audience that would like to speak? No employee representative, okay.
Who'd always smile?
Now, because it's real. What it all?
Just happy to be here.
All right, I do see new faces at my table, so there you go. Danbury High School, if you'll introduce yourself.
Dana.
Yes, please.
Good evening, I'm Alsona Rivera, who is the president of Board of Governors, which is the city council of Danbury High School. I'd like now to take the chance to introduce my officers. This is Tiana Harpato, your secretary. This is Amanda Martera, who is vice chief.
Everybody has to stand up, everybody.
It's nice to meet you.
And this is Monique Dill, who is our head coach.
Okay, thank you very much. Ally, you need to sit down and give your thing, speaking into the microphone so they can hear you. Okay, thank you. Put it on, I want you to put it on. Lane is on now?
So, opening of the school year went exceptionally well. Students pushed through the heat of the first few days and made the transition into new school years easy and smooth. Classes after school activities, extracurriculars, and fall sports are in full swing.
I don't think she's on. Thank you. I don't think, I don't think.
The opening of the school year went exceptionally well. Students pushed through the heat of the first few days and made the transition into new school years easy and smooth. Classes, extracurriculars, after school activities, and fall sports are in full swing.
What's the next person missing?
Not introducing new technology.
To add to the anxiety we're shoving things in their face, I'm sorry.
Students and teachers should be commended for teaching and learning regardless of the distracting sounds of the ongoing construction. Adjustment and busy noises of machines and tools has been handed effectively in the classroom. Very fun. One of our first projects as BOG officers was to develop a Twitter account following in order to be able to relay important school information to students and parents. We promoted the account by raffling off small prizes to new followers within the first few days of school, and we now have almost eight hundred followers. In terms of upcoming dates, this Friday we'll be holding a club fair during lunch periods to introduce and involve students in many extracurriculars that we are holding. Additionally, a school-wide open house will be on Monday, September nineteenth. Freshman class elections will be held on October sixth. Our spirit week will be the week of the twenty-fourth till the twenty-eighth of October, followed by the homecoming football game on the twenty-eighth and homecoming dance on the twenty-ninth. And we'd like to thank you for allowing us to participate in these meetings, and we look forward to having it on.
Thank you. Is that it for Danbury?
Yes.
Thank you very much, that was very, very nicely done. Thank you. I'm glad you all participated, I've never had that happen before, so I think it's very nice. Thank you. Next, we have ACE.
So, Deanna Hernandez from ACE.
Hi.
I'm representing ACE today, and students at ACE have started off a great school year. With the new cell phone ban in place, students are more focused and attentive in all their classes. Attendance rate at ACE for the past two weeks has been very good. This is a school-wide goal for us this year, and so far daily attendance rates are near ninety percent each day. On Saturday, September tenth.
That's a good fact. That's great to hear.
On Saturday, September tenth, students from ACE volunteered their time and did community service at the annual taste of Danbury. Students from ACE have volunteered at this event for over twenty years and joined Principal Sandy in the event this past Saturday. This Friday, September sixteenth, ACE students will participate in our annual school-wide team-building trip to Camp Hurley in Patterson, New York. Students will participate in a variety of events and will have an opportunity to climb a thirty-foot wall as well. We look forward to a great day at the camp.
That was quite a fun one.
One of my favorite field trips.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
One of my favorite field trips.
Oh, is it really?
We get to zip line and climb the walk while she included.
Excellent. I would like one to ask you one question. Tell me about the cell phone, Dan.
So, every day we report to our guidance, which is homeroom, and we hand in our phones. Each one, each of the students have a Ziploc bag and lock it up at the office, and at the end of the day, we go, we report back to our homerooms and get our cell phones back. And I am in favor of the cell phones, you actually not only see everyone participating and being attentive in class, but making friends, socializing, not everyone's like on their phone all the time, so I just see like positive.
Yeah, this is a good thing. Okay, good, very good, thank you. All righty, um, thank you. Thank you all very, very much. All right, I'm pretty much next, I think. Okay. Any other speakers? We're looking very long.
Yeah.
Do we have a presentation? Goodbye, Mr. Donovan. Goodbye, ladies.
Goodbye. No, I can't speak out anywhere. I mean, I can believe this. Like a ninja.
Here we go. Goodbye, everybody.
I'm heading out then.
There we go. Dan Donovan, hi.
She's here, you just.
So, so.
Go round, sit down.
Four more things here, I guess.
Bye.
Good job.
The people in the hallway, Mr. Donovan. All right, moving on. Do we have a presentation, Deanna, no?
No, many.
No, thank you.
But we have a lot to talk.
I know. Okay, because the next person that's going to speak will not stop for about the next hour, so everybody get comfy. Sound built.
Thank you. I thought we'd do the school update. I've been sending information to you, to the board.
And thank you.
It's evolving, and we had a lot more to talk about. So, let me just start by, you can go to your gentleman enrollment, your class size, your higher transportation. You can do both during your transportation and, okay?
All right.
Start with enrollment.
Do you have those numbers?
I know, it's like, anyway. I want to watch this stuff, I'll tell you. Okay, enrollment. If the board could see in their current package, how interesting, that report you guys have is dated September second. We actually ran some new numbers as of September fourteenth, and the total as of district enrollment right now is actually up, approximately two-hundred-and-forty students as of, as of right now. We see the bulk of students coming up, particularly in those Rogers Park sixth grade, that sixth grade numbers, let's consider forty-two new students there coming out. We continue to see, as Dr. Sauer was talking about tonight, the high numbers in the elementarys, the first grade, nine-hundred-and-twenty-six kids, nine-hundred-and-twenty-four, nine-hundred-and-twenty-four coming across. It's concerning. My, my kind of guess is that kindergarten number's going to go over nine-hundred by the time we're all done, for just through the registration center. High school numbers are big, high school broke three-thousand. That's, that's also noteworthy, at least on most of the latest data we have. Some odd things that came out of this, this cycle, South Street enrollment, kindergarten. We actually added a fourth kindergarten at South Street. That number was around sixty, sixty-two last year, now we're eighty-five. South Street, to say as of right now, is, is out of space. We were actually with Mrs. Pellon, out of her office, she hopped over to the conference room, the booth's a special, led staffing around, so South Street really is a, is a concern for next year going forward. If that growth truly does hold. Other places, there, there are kind of nowhere that we see, you know, West Side now has, has a new, the new eighth grade is in there now, so that's now just shy of six-hundred. As far as staffing additions, we did add a new kindergarten at South Street. We added a new kindergarten at Shelter Rock. We added a new third grade at Shelter, and also a second, so additional adding there. King Street did see some shifting in the campus enrollment, but the, the actual overall campus staffing stayed the same. We also did add a class at Ellsworth, a class at Park Avenue. We actually have a team talk class now at Ellsworth. And obviously Shelter Rock, we have two team talk classes there, there's a fourth grade and a, sorry, a second grade and a fourth grade, they're team talk right now at Shelter. Other than that, I think that's at least kind of some of the quick highlights of enrollment.
The, the high schools experiencing, the number of students that are entering, I'm trying to think about the number we talked about this morning since they begin the school. How many new registers?
Four hundred.
Four hundred since the first day of school. You know, people can call and say, you know, folks can't get in, that's why, a lot of folks being assessed, and that might have, but the point again, I want to make, high schools have been challenged, the students taking math classes, science classes, so they have to do some adding there. I have a better idea, I said, I need to talk to Dan now, that we have some areas in the specials that may have to do some conditional staffing. Try and handle that at all of those, so that'll add to this number. I'll get a better clarity on it. Now, these, all, everybody knows he's unofficial, Pro Belinda Ranger, but I don't see the FTE's changing, except going.
No reduction.
Going north and not going south on us.
Yeah, we could also add a, a T-Sol teacher, also as an EOL teacher at, at Shelter Rock.
And, and just for the board, you know, we go through the stuff in the spring and talked about, you know, this stuff happens, why do you need resources? We try to explain this, this is a narrative, people won't listen, but this budget's going to reflect somewhere in the vicinity of four-hundred-thousand dollars of unanticipated, that has to be in, and we're all food with this, we'll talk about that in a little bit, you know, a little more about that number, but that's just an aggregate. In addition to this, what we are experiencing, you know, can't even talk a little about this, in and out of our staff members, as recently as today, we lost two individuals on the beach, and I'm a special, I'm also administrator early, and we're having trouble backfilling, so we get some calls about subs in the high school, that's true, cannot find certified teachers, so we go to next best thing, let's get a substitute as we keep looking. So, we are challenged this year, it's really been very on the air. I did write a little super canon talking about it, you know, everybody's experiencing, we have a migration south, and not gas south, you know what I mean? Going that way, so we're having some problems with that. When's our transportation?
Yeah, I do. Transportation really has been a struggle for the first two weeks, to say the least. We've added buses and added buses, and to be honest, lately weekend, STA was actually getting some buses out of their hub in Guilford in some out of Massachusetts, just to cover breakdowns and issues. As of right now, and I say so they left the bus coming today about five o'clock, we've added one mini bus and three full-size, and as of right now, we're looking at possibly another mini and another full-size. We have runs, for example, bus nine at the high school, bus nine was about three, thirty students on that bus, that bus is now about eighty-plus. We're seeing a lot of coming out of the Rivington area, out of those condos over there, there's about thirty students just in that area alone.
Those are new students.
Yeah, they did exist, that are coming out of there. I'm seeing growth really across everywhere. The West Side runs are challenging, we're adding buses there, you're seeing like bus seventy-seven A and bus seventy-seven B. I, I'm, I'm concerned to say the least, and that that's where Dr. Sauer's going with the budget freeze, I'm, I'm mindful here to staff when we add it, but I mean, adding the buses, adding the teacher, you're seventy thousand dollars per vehicle, whether they're mini or full-size, they're really the same cost in a sense. So, busing is, is a major concern. I kept thinking when we get out of the woods, we kept adding the buses. We're going to work with STA, I'm not really worried about that, we'll, we'll work out some pricing, they've always been really good with deals, nothing, some delays and different things like that, but I mean, my guess is folks are going to get some complaints, there's been some, it's not awful, but I mean, we, we addressed the overcrowding, we did have a couple buses where kids were sitting on the floor the first day, because, you know, we had, at times we have eighty-five kids scheduled, but maybe only sixty ride. Well, in this case, ninety, rather than supposed to eighty-five, it was like we're going the wrong direction. So, we continue to see a lot of challenges there. West Side, we're going to take a hard look at that, if the board knows that drains across the whole entire city, so we're actually, you know, maybe really, in a sense, redoing that whole routing scheme, those buses seem to free up some information there, but particularly high school runs are the biggest problem, most overcrowded we're seeing in the high school run. Even the added tech run, those, those are seeing overcrowd, those are our kids too, we have to bus them. So, preschool, preschool runs are maxed, not, I don't mean to add their thing, but they're fault, very fault. So, again, it doesn't take adding many students to really sense wreak havoc, and it clearly is a issue, I've never seen a year like this, even the other West Side wasn't as bad. Bus companies been just, I mean, just flat out, so it's, it's, it's good, they're getting there, but it's, the additions are going to be, you're talking, you know, three-hundred-thousand dollars or so, it's something.
Bill, you have some man, new staffing?
It's pretty much the same thing, the parent complaints typically come to my office, and there's been an escalation this year, in part driven by transportation issues, in part driven by T-Sol in the high school, and my child is having, you know, a full roster of classes. We've also gotten some, we have a different kind of complaint coming in, or issues rather coming in, with a lot of custody issues, and it's the dad against the mom kind of thing, is showing up at the doorsteps of the schools, so the principals are calling me, saying, what do I do in this case? And we've all been running out to the schools, kind of doing triage work. So, it's a little bit different here, as a case of startup, challenging here.
Do you want to take questions? Answer the question.
Yes, go ahead.
Joe, on the, the additional buses, how many, you said there were, how many full-size and any small ones?
As of right now, we've already put into the system one mini and three full-size, and after I left STA tonight, we're looking at another mini and another full-size, so in reality, we're talking about right now, maybe five to six buses, depending on how it goes.
So, four full sizes now?
Four full size and two mini, we need some minis, particularly on some of our bi-level runs that have green claim, I've got a lot overcrowded there, we have to add, in a sense, STA's just adding the buses, now we're going to deal with them later, right now I've gotten rid of the kids, the findings will come later. We've got a meeting with old Tony and Joe from STA, the executives, they're going to come down, we're going to hammer it out. You know, they don't want the extra buses, I guess, I guess, important part of those anyway, but I mean, they don't want to run them, I mean, the last thing they want to do is hire more drivers, add more staff, add more stuff to them, so it's not a game. Now, I've looked at the numbers, and maybe a little bit, high school runs are just maxed, I can't say that enough, just maxed.
And for the elementary schools, I mean, you can't leave these kids on the buses for forty-five.
No, and, and a lot of your West Side runs are pretty long, because again, you're crossing the whole city, we've got some West Side runs that are just an hour, there's a lot of travel time in those runs, so it's just by default, they're long.
I've seen Rivington, and they just seem to be expanding, I mean, they got construction going on like crazy. I don't know about the downtown part, but that's, the downtown part, I see some cars passing, drive by, but you mentioned that'll come up.
Oh, well, can you fly some right now? I mean, I think, I want to say there's two or three students out there, I'm actually busing one student out there today, because I just checked them out this afternoon, so.
Does, does anyone know what the Rivington expansion's going to be altogether? How many, how much of that is still?
The, oh, we hired a company to come in and do that, build out, go, go, go look at the plans, not what they tell us, see what was approved, and that's what they're going to do.
Yeah, go to work on the plan.
We have our first raise, look at the buildouts when they report to us, and give us a better idea of the score.
Because I drove through there, that looks like it's only like thirty or thirty percent of what they're going to build, so I mean, if that's going to triple in size, and we've already got thirty students, we might wind up with a hundred out of there alone.
When you're talking, I'm expecting surprise, four-hundred-thousand dollars.
No, it's, it's, I mean, we've, we had West Side, we had some issues with some of those, we've added a few, we typically add about a bus a year, and I have a, I have a run sheet on my wall, I got here, sixty-seven buses right now, or, or, I mean, or eighty, just full-size vehicles, so.
So, so for the board, what we'll do is, we add the buses, the equipment, so then it's safe for the kids, right? They'll go back through there and tear them up, and tear up the rooms.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're, we're interested in that.
See, think what we need, but just know, we'll need probably three buses.
Oh, yeah, we've had, STA's carried us a free bus at times, and or two, but I mean, literally, at least three or four are going to hit the books somewhere along the line.
Now, who's taking all these people, and why don't we do registration?
Okay, so, more good news from my front. We have registered through the center, you know, remember, we opened the central registration center in the spring, and we staffed it with two full-time registrars, with an additional support as needed, a full-time tester, so that's the person who does all of the ESL testing, for those children that come in that may qualify for services, in addition to another part-time tester, we also had a nurse in there for the summer reviewing immunization forms and health records. They, that little crew has done eight-hundred-and-seventy kindergartners, we, that number still looks low to us. The number of kids that have increased by enrollment, just straight numbers, looks like about four and a half percent, so we were around nine-hundred, a little over nine-hundred kindergartners last year, so we're expecting some more. Anecdotally, I think right after the period, after Labor Day, up until October first is when we start to see a lot of kids coming through the center. So, just shy of nine-hundred kindergartners, and an additional four-hundred older kids. So, remember, everyone new to the district is coming through the center, so an additional four-hundred kids. Gina Jasmine. Gina Jasmine, who owns our data department, and I have spent a lot of the summer over from the center. I can tell you that they are just doing things on the fly. Lots of issues with registration that we've had to sort through, so we're really trying to get kids in as quickly as we can, and get them entered into Power School and ready to go as quickly as we can. So the center has really done a good job. We're going to reconvene the task force that we put together last year to look again this year at how to make the process more smooth. Because there's always ways to improve, so we'll start to do that and start a kickoff with that tomorrow, with some of the smaller group of players, and then we'll expand it back to the larger task force again to take a look at that. So that's an ongoing work in progress. On the hiring front, we started new teacher orientation with, I believe, just under 70 certified staff. We are now up to 98 new certified staff. So in that run-up of the last week before school started, we continued to lose certified staff members. We're losing them in shortage areas to other districts, which is really starting to cause some stress and strain on our system. As Dr. Sal mentioned earlier, in those shortage areas, it's becoming increasingly difficult, not only to find folks with certification, but folks that have some experience that can go in and hold down the fort, and so we can get someone certified in. So that's a constant struggle. Right now is the time where we start to go into losing a lot of the non-certified staff, parents and tutors. We've lost about 40 of those recently, so we're scrambling, along with Kelly Truchus and her team, to try to make sure that we've got enough special ed support in. But that also is kind of a continuing cycle. I don't think it's really all that different from years prior. The certified staff at the end was a little bit of a bonus for us this year that we didn't anticipate. But you'll remember in years past, my office has done more like 150 to 200 certified staff numbers because of the alliance money and different programs we put in. So we were expecting a lighter year, and it doesn't look like we really got it this year, but we've got everybody that's in the pipeline in. We're continuing to try to pull folks into that sub pool. You'll remember, that's where a lot of complaints come about whether there are enough subs in the sub pool. We're hovering just under 200 right now. We're continuing to lose some of those people to other districts, to full-time jobs, which is normally expected, but that's, again, sort of part of the process. The only other thing I wanted to mention is, my office is going to come under an increased strain from yet another unfunded mandate. We had the legislature pass a new statute that was effective July 1, that now supplements the background check process. So for anyone who works with kids, we were already doing a fingerprint with an FBI and a local background check for criminal records. We were sending a request to DCF, which requires them to check their records and look for the name of this person there. What is now required is every applicant that we select needs to complete a form that shows the name, address, and contact person for every educational institution they've ever worked for. And we need to send a form to those organizations, asking them to certify that these people have never been the subject of a finding of, it would be for predators, for abuse, and even sorts of DCF findings. It's a, what do you call it, goods and belt and suspenders, I guess, right? Because we're checking with DCF, now we've got this additional requirement. The trick is, we're also getting in these forms from places where folks that have worked for us maybe five, seven, 10 years ago are now going to work. And these are files that are located offsite, don't typically have a lot of information, and we have five business days to certify. And the statute also says that if you don't hear back from the district where you sent this, you must call them three times before, and you certify that you called three times before you can then move on. So that's going to create an absolutely enormous stress on my already small band of happy flavors. So Dr. Sal has been reaching out to other superintendents. We're hearing the same things out of Stanford, about Fairfield, larger districts that are processing all the people, and it's just, it's just yet another thing that we need to deal with that we really weren't anticipating, and we just don't have the staff to do it. So we're going to continue to live with that problem. We're going to turn around now, or return to turn around some state reporting, who is, who is in jobs that they have the proper certification for. We're starting to report teachers as part of the state database. That now will consume a lot of time from folks in my office to make sure that they've got everybody in the right place. And I could go on and on, but that's the most important stuff.
I'm going to have to give up all those thirteen mentions.
Yes.
Everybody just declines all the free calls.
Are there any professional firms that do this as a specialty, we can form it out to?
We've looked at background check firms, they're very expensive, and I have been working with my team to try to streamline what we do, so we're really doing the basics. But there's just a lot of it that needs to be done here. We're also working with Shipman and Goodman, who's put together some packets of information, but it's really, it's the time-intensive piece of looking through the files and seeing what we have, it's really.
Really needs to go on our legislative agenda. We need to talk to get folks, I mean, we do a few gilets, it's an added step that I get, why do you want to do it? But it's, it's, it's one of those things that's just not, it's not going to happen. And I've talked to a number of superintendents. So Rich, what we're going to do is, as we talk about, our legislative group ought to go there, and I'll go on caps I wrote down. They got by everyone. No one really realized it was there. All of a sudden, this, this shows up on this paperwork, so we just need to get it.
I think that turnaround timetable seems to be a little bit unrealistic.
Five days?
Yeah.
It might be five years.
Yeah, somebody sitting around as one person to spend time.
I also just want to echo something Bill said. I spent quite a lot of time in the last 10 days responding to, reading custody agreements, reading protective orders. I've spoken with representatives from DCF, I've been on the front of the special editions unit, so, yeah, there's a lot going on in the first two weeks. And it's been, I would, what everybody said, it's been a bit of a bumpy.
So let me say, it has not been smooth over. If you haven't gathered, but if you go around the classrooms, I will say, the teachers are teaching, the materials there, so in the classroom, that is going on, that's what we really care about. But a lot of this purpose stuff, it really impacts a lot of us, and it really causes a lot of challenge. But the classrooms, as we go around, we've been all of them, teachers are there, whether they're subs, and they're working, smiles on their face, and I'm thankful for them. And it's been kind of hot, sideways.
We have a lot of averages too, working in Michigan, and there's, how many thousand kids?
There's 11,000.
11,000.
1,298.
I mean, he came back and said everything was perfect, I think we went, okay, right away, we're just taking.
The teachers are really stepped up.
We grew like, so far, 2.1% since last year, over last year.
We'll talk about some of the programmatic things that are going on when I present my goals. There have been some substantive differences in terms of reading program and math program. There's adding to a lot of the angst that's going on, because it's new stuff, and they need to change that school's app. So when I say people are working, they're working at all of this, I'm really pleased with that, but we'll talk about that another time. Denver High School construction, air quality meetings that we had, and also talked about the Shelter Rock module.
Yeah, we updated the facilities committee some on Monday night. We have a meeting up at the high school monitoring some of the sounds, we've had some issues with noise. Dan did shift around some of the jack cameras that go on out back. At one point, it was going on eight, nine hours a day. We did kind of shift around, so at least kind of a heart of a day, we could agree to shift it, so we'll later shift. So that's been good. Overall, I mean, we haven't had too many major pickups with the project. Fire department's been involved, started metering, Jim Russell's been around, fire marshal checking on things, so I think everyone's been involved, and, you know, folks can see that. Rich and I had a conversation with OSHA a couple of weeks ago, we were up in Weathersfield meeting with them. So I think all, I think it's been, it's moving along. Projects on scope, so far, so good. They did award the addition out the back that's been bid and awarded, so all is moving forward, no issues.
I think we should mention that we had a meeting about three weeks ago.
Correct.
With all of the.
Antonio, Tom, you just, all of them.
Contractors and safety folks, that's all going on. One of the things that we did with the town, we've asked them to take, come and have periodic unimpressed checks. So they'll walk around, and we'll be proactive about that, as they check the, you know, the air quality and other things, so that we're not just waiting for complaints. And the town's been working with us, allowing people to come up and do that. We're thankful for that. The, we're going to talk to the, what, the lowest bidder tomorrow?
Portables were bid out, we bid open bids Tuesday. Right now, we have one low bidder at 332,000, which our budget was actually half a million, so that, that's looking promising. We're actually evaluating his work tomorrow, with me, Dr. Sal, myself, and the architects at 10:30. He does have availability, I spoke to him yesterday on the phone at length. Said a lot of work in New York, direction, New York, New York company, does work for MTA, transit company, the parks are over in New York, so they're definitely viable there. The next bidder above that was Rizzo, at 645,000. Obviously, it's well above our budget right now. So, you know, barring any unforeseen issues with the current vendor, I think we look like we on track there. We're pushing dates, I'm hopeful still for, sometimes in mid-November timeframe. You know, it depends on availability, I am hearing it does have portables, it's just quote-unquote in stock. So once we move through that, get some of the permitting done, we got to throw, obviously, the corporation councils off, the board of ward and the city side. But there only had four classrooms, furniture's been ordered, all, all the stuff we could do ahead of time has been done. Obviously, maybe the walls and the roofs could go in there, but, you know, all the furniture's sitting in a warehouse ready to go, certainly we've done, I think we can get going. Including lots, but not as, all the state approvals are in, and just so folks know, that really held us up. That money we needed from the state delayed us, I would say, at least two to three months, clearly to get through all the state paperwork, get the regs and other, I mean, it's daunting. The city council had a revote, because they didn't like a piece of minutes that were submitted to them, it's been, it's a arduous process.
Arduous, very good.
I got to use one big word.
That's a very good word.
Before I get to CJ, Ben, do you want, then you can tell me if we talk about.
Do you want the update on college position and restructuring?
Why don't you, no, this, that works, no, that's okay, you can do that, just that. One of our supervisors, I said before, we've lost to a neighbor town, so we have to back from that. But is there anything in enrollment for special ed, any programming?
Enrollment continues to mirror the general enrollment of the district. We went up just under a 12% last year, about 0.9 of 1%. And I anticipate to see growth in a little bit this year. So our adequate district placements are pretty steady. You know, in fact, we actually lost two, one doing a movement, or actually both doing a movement, but I anticipate to probably fill those with others. So I think the adequate replacement numbers will continue pretty steady this year, is my anticipation. So that's all the updates and special ed.
Okay, I'm sorry, Kelly. Something I should have said when she actually sat at the table, the new person at the table, you all know her face from sitting in the audience, is going to be at our table every, at every meeting. She's Kelly Truchus?
Truchus.
Okay, and, and she's pupil services for us, okay, and she's going to sit with us.
Yeah, I think they.
Welcome.
And so she can't leave her own.
You're really, it's because you can't leave, that's why. Did you see what happens when you don't sit here? You're in with everybody else gone.
When you make it here, you get an ankle bracelet.
One, bring a bracelet.
Bring a bracelet, all right.
I, I've sent material to you about CJ, so, but let me just tell you that on Friday, which, two days, CJ group will be meeting with the attorneys. They've gone through it and dissected the case, and we'll have better information. But you've heard, we were in the audience when the final verdict was given. Right now, the status, as I understand, and there's lawyers here, they know better, that right now, the actions is to seek information. One of the areas, as you know, the judge upheld the state's contention for adequacy. CJ, which we were part of, we were trying to get them to define adequacy. His statement was adequacy is not necessarily needs to be defined by the state, but it needs to be access and equity. And then in the next, so we lost the case for a second. In the next breath, he says that the way we fund the business, the districts in Connecticut is irrational and bordering on constitution. We gave 180 days to remedy that, come back to them, and then the plaintiff's, 60 days to respond to that. It sounds as though, when that point happens, then when that decision is made, that's when things can be appealable. At this time, it's, I want to call it fact-finding, but he's asked for some things to be done. Then he went on to talk about things that I think he's, for years, may have, may have had an issue with. Started talking about the comprehensiveness of high schools, and what is the diploma need? And he started reading off every school, the number of students that were leaving high school that were low-based. He would get the Greenwich, he'd get the Darien, and say they're, let's say, 95%, 92%, Bridgeport, you know, Meridian, Denver. The numbers begin first, and he gets to the end of that narrative, he says, I think there needs to be something that parallels Massachusetts, which is the exit exam. So we wanted the state to look at that, so another assessment. Then he started talking about a system of identifying teachers and teacher evaluation resulting in less than 1% of people needing help. And he said, it's like Tom and Ken in a rainstorm. So he wants them to relook at that teacher evaluation system. He then said that perhaps students who are benefiting from special ed are continuing to benefit, and those that are not benefiting, we should think twice about providing services. Which is a federal mandate of 94, 142. So I think he went over, over beyond where he should have been. We were asking clarification on adequacy and funding, and we got all this stuff back. So Friday, we'll have more information, and I'll bring it to you, but that's what I have right now in terms of what we think. I haven't read today that the governor, the governor said today that he's not Jordan Ralph, therefore, he's not going to make any decisions on any appeals that goes to the states that are in his interest. So that was in the news today. So right now, it's minimal. It sounds better for us, you know, we're losing 40 to 60, 80 dollars a year. If something is done, or the, or the way they calculate the formula, and the way it's cherry-man, and if that's good and correct, we stand and receive a lot more. And our kids, the town, stand and receive more resources, but that's pretty far out at this point. So it's kind of wait and see. Bill or anybody, Kim?
No, I, I mean, the only comment, I think, what commentators are saying quite roundly is that he exceeded the scope. It's what we would call dicta, it's just, it's commentating. And I think that, that what's going to be difficult now is, I think they're going to be in that constant wrangling about whether or not the changes to the formula, if there are any coming out of the legislature, are going to meet this standard, and this, it, it could be circling for some time.
Is he looking at a, is he questioning and asking to, to come up with a different structure of the teacher evaluation? If so, then what do you do currently, if you're, you know, we talked about it all last year, you're in the process of currently doing a whole lot of data and work to evaluate teachers? Is that something that becomes a waste of time, because it could be that it's going to be changed, or it's unnecessary, or you just stop doing what you're currently doing and wait for a final decision to come down?
No, right now, we're just following the law, which means we have the confidence, plenty of changes happens, and then, of course, we have to follow it. What we're doing is, I, I'm excited about what we're doing right now, just making it on the sentence list, we'll talk more about that. But again, I think dicta, is that the word that you used? You know, I think, oh, it's so box inappropriate, you know, he just went on and on and talked about things. You know, if they, if it gets narrowly down to talking about resources, doesn't really care about.
You think he'd want to change his role from judge to superintendent?
He is smarter than that, I think.
I don't know.
Well, anyway, I will say this, he took everything very seriously. I was in court, we testified some, I spent a whole day there testifying, Anna was there. He really tried to listen and learn, and, but there was, there were things, as Kim just a little bit do, that probably outside the school. He had a lot of deep feelings about things that he said. When we were there, he went two hours, did not stop.
Y'all did not stop.
He stopped.
Yeah.
Two hours, took a break, came back, and then, so he, he just kept going on with that. So he took it extremely serious. When he was, during the trip, he cited different court cases in Connecticut and Colorado. He did quite an extensive job, did nexus to things that have happened in the past, putting some depth into what, why he was making the decision. It's just the scope of it, is what he was talking about. So, I mean, he, I thought he was very serious about the work. So anyway, that's where I.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Sal? Thank God, okay. See, we're moving on to, oh, oh, information.
School funding coalition, there was a meeting that took place, Rich, maybe one of them is.
Right. Last year before we left, I had mentioned as part of the community relations committee, that we were going to get together and work.
that we were gonna get together, work for the summer to, to put together a group that was going to become organized and try to, to spearhead this particular project. And this particular project would be an ongoing project that would be more of a standing-type committee within the community relations committee. But I had worked during the summer with, I think, Klein, she's, I think, head of the Danbury High School student, the governance council. We worked and had several meetings with Dr. Sal, with Katie Roy. We came up with an interesting, sort of a turnaround, was that this, we formed the name Coalition because it had a good name, but we, we also said that it should be headed by the community and taken out of the, the spearheading of the Board of Ed. So it makes it much more important when people are going to Hartford or talking to legislators that it's a representative group of Danbury and it's not the Board of Ed banging on the door asking for more money. With that being said, we had a, an open house meeting on August eighteenth, I think it was, at the AIS Magnus School, which was nicely attended. We had about fifty or so people there. Mike McLaughlin, Senator McLaughlin was there. Mayor Bowden was there, one of the council meeting. Holly and Fred and Michael were there as well, Gladys was there. It was nicely attended. From that, we got sign up for people, and it was a cross-section of people. We had some business people, we had, we had community people that were interested. So we got people to sign up to, to actively become involved in this, work with this. Eileen Klein is going to spearhead this project, which a board member from the community relations would, would be part of, part of the group. But basically, it would only be as a liaison. I think it has great merit because representing, when people get together in the city as a whole and you got a nice cross-section of everybody who's there, from students to, to business people, religious leaders, et cetera, it makes more of an impact when you're talking to some sort of a legislator that this is a city problem and not solely a board of ed problem. Although we'd like to focus on the education. In, in the best-case scenario, it could have great things down the future because it could go on to, to advocate for homelessness or senior housing and things like that. But right now, it's just in the infancy stage. They're collecting more names, they're gonna put together a, a group and a committee under the directional, take some lead from the lobbyists that, that we hired, and also getting the data from Katie Roy, who won't be part of this, but will furnish this, furnish this data. So I'm very happy about it, very excited about it. And I, I think it looks to be a, a very, very rewarding situation in light of just what Dr. Sal had mentioned. As a case in point, things evolve and change. And, and so the, the point about, let's say, a, a final exam, or, or an exit exam, as you call it, you know, maybe something that we could add to, to our list there. We had three items that we had discussed that we thought were hot-button items that we want to tackle. So it, it's an evolving issue, but I'm excited. A lot of people signed up for it. We're looking to get a lot more, and, and I think it went well.
I agree too, so Richard, thank you. And thank you for all the work, because you were tired of sleep for last year to get this done. Does anybody have any questions of Richard? Okay, all righty, who are we now?
Order reports.
No, okay, my report. Okay, let's start with the Kev Caps Convention. Who's going? Yes, December eighteen-nineteen. So I'm gonna ask everybody to call Deb and let her know, and if you're going to stay, if you're going to stay over, she'll tell you what to do, so that the city will reunish you for your night on the town.
We can pre-book them.
I know, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, possibly, no.
So they'll book you, and, and the only person that I think that, that doesn't think we should stay over is sitting at the table who's coming. And then I said, you're gonna drive back and forth? She goes, no, my parents live there. They're like, oh, okay. I, I, well, I, I said, well, I need to stay over. She goes, why would you stay over? Cause.
So we don't have to get out early the next morning and drive back up?
And I said, yeah, please.
It's about nine and eighty, my friend.
Yeah, well, we're gonna go to her mother's.
She's driving.
Very good.
I'm driving back. I'm good.
All righty. Okay, so that's taken care of. It's important for the people that are new, yes, disco, yeah, to go. Second item on this is Ted Carroll's board self-evaluation. It's a workshop. I would like it to be scheduled for October fifth, which is the first Wednesday. Okay, Mr. Carroll's from the Leadership Institute in Hartford. And he's done before as before. He's going to be pretty dynamic. I spoke to him for about a half an hour today on the phone, so that it's not rote the same thing that he did when he was here two years ago, that it's something different, something that we personally will also take away a skill from and learn about ourselves for ourselves. And it'll be good for the board. He wants to talk about governance and the meaning of governance, which is, basically, is our top priority of what we do as board of education members. You know, we're not educators, we're, is governance. And so I asked him to explain it, and he kept me interested for about five minutes. And that's hard, okay, to keep me interested that long. But that's how dynamic he is when he's passionate about something. I found something he's passionate about. You will get, he asked for all your email addresses, and Deb sent them to him today for me. You'll get an email with a survey that, that I'm going to ask you to take and turn back in, so he has that in evidence when he comes, so he can direct it specifically to us. He's not interested in more names, he's just interested in our answers as a group to the survey.
Where are you looking to have this?
Uh, here, right here.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask.
Oh, well, that's, this is Sal's concern. Well, it's not just Sal's concern, it's Deb's concern. If we make it at five-thirty, you'll be at us dinner, okay? But I don't know if everybody could do that.
Right. We could follow schedule of five-thirty, we could, we could have the food out and then start at six, is what I aim. So it's really by eight o'clock.
Yeah, so eight o'clock would be adding.
That makes sense. We could start at five-thirty, I was like, ten, but for, for, for two weeks.
So how does that sound to everybody?
If I'm, if I'm in.
Well, is it, is it inconvenient to you really very badly?
What's that?
Is that inconvenient to you very badly?
No, I couldn't, I just go in and work now early.
Okay. See, have you considered, have you, have you?
Thank you, thank you for looking at me.
Well, we're, we're looking at, thank you for everything.
So you're gonna have to get there at ten?
Yeah. Yeah. And I take it lunch.
Did you hear that, same soul?
She likes to get there before lunch.
You have to come after coffee before lunch.
Okay, speaking of her, okay. Does everybody know, we all know what these are, they're passes, all right? We have people sitting at the table that have, have more than two people that would need to get into games at the high school. So, and it, it's okay with me if you call and you need a pass, okay? And, and don't not use them. All right, that's what I'm gonna say, don't not use them, give them to someone that moves. All right, guys? It's very nice of them to do that for us. And they do it year after year. But this is the first time I can remember in ever, forever, that you, that you would have a bunch of people to go, as opposed to, not the kids on the street, just two boys that I want to view. Yes. Okay, what else? There was something else, Sally, I wanted to talk about, but it's not, that's not on my focus. What? A survey, oh, okay. Actually, it's two things. I'll go in a minute. I'm gonna, Holly's gonna talk about the survey, the student survey that was done at the high school this year. We have the results, and she'll talk about that. Before I talk, and what I'm gonna do before I turn it over to her, is I was at the family, or the firm family learning center, what we call Osborne Street, for our, our monthly board meeting. They've changed their name, just so everybody knows, it's the Family and Community Engagement Center, because they do so many things, it's not just the family learning center anymore. At, our next meeting, or via email, whichever comes first, I will have all of this information that they handed me as I was booking out, that they didn't have enough copies for everybody. So I'll do is go home and scan everything in, and you can get it on your computers, okay? And it was important for you to read, because we do things in this, this city, or this, this group of people do things that are unbelievable. From registering kids to decide, working with parents in playgroups, help facilitate the children learning English. And it's all done without anybody knowing it. It's done to three and four-year-old children, and, and just by people like you and I that just go and do it. It fascinates me every time I go that there's something else. There is a, a truck now that goes from place to place, and I'm single, so I won't go on and on and on about it. It's called a Grow program. And it's coming to the Park Avenue Playgroup. Is it? On Grow program. It's a truck, and it's full of food, vegetables and fruit, and, and, and it's, it all read it to y'all. The mission of the Grow program is to help alleviate child hunger in America through a provision of a health education and food to children and their families at an early, in an early education setting, okay? Connecticut Food Bank will partner with the school programs, serving families with limited resources twice a month for a six-month period. During that time, Connecticut Food Bank will partner with various organizations to conduct thirty-minute sessions covering topics such as nutrition, education, budgeting, fitness, public tips, and financial education. Which is, will be invited onto our custom truck to choose a variety of food products with shelved staple items, dairy, meat, bread, and produce. They say after the first one that they did, everybody was running around school checking the dates on, on all the food and, and everything in it. But we do that, I mean, we bring that in. There's a walking to school program, that started in October, that's during October, where the kids from Park Avenue were often walked to school from their homes. And then the parents are going to observe, the parents that walk with the students, so that if, if I'm walking by Holly's house and she can't get out today, she can send out to Hartford. And so that all the people that walk get to know one another, so they can all, they'll make sure that everybody gets to school. No, it's a walk-in, it's not, this is the bus. This is not walking, this is, they just walk. I will, I'll copy all the stuff clearly, but if you read it, okay? Because it was really fascinating.
I believe it was last Thursday, that food program. It was open to everybody in Park Avenue school, including the preschool. Trucks had used, he had ten, seventy-five pounds of food. It's an incredible amount of food, any selection of food. And it was open to everybody. I believe it comes by, I wanna say, once a month.
It does, that's what it says, yeah.
It was, it's funded by a grant from United Way. And what an incredible thing. It, it, I mean, it's great, of course, Park Avenue could use it, but it'd be nice if other schools in, in, you know, different areas could.
It's twice a month, it's the second and fourth thirties, Jason, okay? And it's funded by the Connecticut Food Bank, our family foundation, the Volunteer Center, and United Way. That's who funds it. These, I'll send you all the information, so you all can, you all, because I'm from South Danbury, can all figure it out. Yes, Tom?
I just said one thing. Some of you know I study the United Way Board and the Council.
Yes.
And we've taken all the funding from United Way, changed the entire scope of the organization towards something called Alice, asset, little income, constraint, employee. That means the world being poor. So these are moms that, are the single moms that, I have three kids, they have to make a decision between buying their medicine for themselves or buying food for their kids. So we're looking at initiatives like this to try and sustain the community and create these collaboratives, like a food collaborative that's gonna help. So that would be a wonderful thing to do for every school in Danbury. And I think that's part of the vision.
This is nice because it doesn't say, or earmark it as, as being poor. It's open to everybody, every, every child in that school, and, and every child that goes to the playgroup in that school is involved. So there's no stigma. Yeah. There's no stigma to getting, I went there with a shopping cart.
Of course you did. So what we're gonna do, this, what we're gonna do is, we're going to, I'll, I'll copy all this so you all can see it, I'll scan it, that's not called copying. I can use the right technology, I'm, or, it's my son, totally, I don't. All righty, and that's all I have to, oh, no, I don't. Mrs. Holly?
Um, okay.
Holly's our rep at the Stand Together and Make a Difference Coalition.
And Dick and I, we were in the meeting the other day as well. Some of you might know what Stand Together and Make a Difference is. It is a coalition involving MCCA and other various people in the community regarding trying to prevent drug use and substance abuse. And one of our biggest focuses, obviously, on youth. So I actually thought the survey was fascinating. They presented it to us as a group. This is high school students, and they looked back at, did like thirty days, and kids were very honest. It was an anonymous survey. They looked at race and gender and age, and at one point, also sexual orientation. And gave us some big hints as far as like risk factors of white kids use, what prevents them from using. And one of the, to me, I thought it'd be great to present it to everybody, I think, parents across Danbury, because you look at some of the, the forty assets that are things that, that teachers at all levels, parents of kids at all ages, can help work out with their kids. And the research is showing that the assets these kids are developing are what we're helping contribute to on these certain levels, is helping keep them away from substance abuse as they get older. So, I mean, there's, there's definitely factors that are very clear, there's some things that are real startling. But as a parent and, and everything educators can care, that it kinda gives us a lot of hope that we do know, or generally speaking, we do know how to help keep kids away from substances, alcohol, opioids, all those things. So we are talking about rollouts and trying to present it to the staff, and then slowly roll it out in various levels of the community. And so this is the third time they've done it, so we're looking at three different years. We're looking at, what, two thousand, two thousand thirteen, two twenty. So this, we're looking back at past data, and the good news is, is that it's decreasing at many levels, which is very positive. But again, it's giving us a lot of key points that we can work on. So we will get in touch with, we'll have somebody here probably during the next meeting to talk about it. And, and it's, it's a very encompassing survey, but we can have a very short presentation that gives the crux of it. So I thought it was fantastic, and hopefully, once you guys hear about it, you can help spread the word and get what we think we should all get out of it.
The thing that came from this nice meeting is that it's very important that the survey itself not be released to the public. Because what happened is, the last time they did it, it was released, the media picked it up and ran with it, and of course, the media didn't focus on anything positive, just how bad our kids are. So we're, they're rolling it out this time differently. I spoke to Dr. Pasquarela, who can tell when it's official when I call him there. Dr. Pasquarela is going to help roll it out to the administrators and to, who else? What was the other?
And I suppose Kelly.
And Kelly, and, yeah, the manager, the people that applies to, and the, and then the different PTOs before it goes, you know, to the media to spread the word.
And the, and the other thing that was brought up that they've used in other school districts is that some student populations have taken results of the survey and then done their own projects to spread it around their own schools. Students themselves can, you know, have some sort of initiative to, to work this on. So I thought it was positive, I thought it was very good. But I think the biggest thing is that if, if parents and educators can, you know, see what they can do to help kids from K all the way to twelve, keep them as much as they can off of, you know, dangerous drugs, why shouldn't we do it? So that, that's it.
But also, a rollout's gonna be not only to the board, but there'll be special rollouts to, to the community itself, different parts of the community. So it's not like they're gonna hold one big forum at the high school and hope that a thousand people, you know, show up. They're actually gonna go and, and solicit the, the clientele and, and the group of people that they want to focus on, trying to, to talk to them on their turf. It's an incredible amount of data, and, and so, and it'll take a good period of time to, to get it rolled out. So I think it's, I think it's good.
Okay. Before we go, thank you, thanks, seriously, thank you. Before we go further, is there anybody else from any committee or, or any group that you're sitting on that would like to speak, Ralph?
Just the citywide PTO, they had their first meeting on Monday, and just, Dr. Sal, what is all the stuff that's going on in the high school, and the new stuff that we did, sites and, you know, facilities and stuff like that. Also, the one thing they look for is, I don't know if you were gonna get that to them or some, is a list of the board representatives for each school.
Did you contact the?
Okay, yeah, because there's some new people on the citywide board, and they were looking for, who's a rep for that school?
That would be good, because it'd be nice if they told the rep when the names were, but we don't always, all of us write Deb ahead of time. Anybody else have anything that they wanna talk about?
One. It's a Kathy thing, she's not here, but I just passed out the Lucille's report, the folks that weren't at the meeting, just goes over all the stuff that was on this summer. A lot of good stuff, it's pretty interesting, I'll read that, a lot of pictures.
Took a lot of pictures because they wanted to make sure that we understood, okay? What's going on? It made us feel so much better to be able to look at the pictures.
Yeah, I didn't care about the words.
No, we didn't.
I could all saw the stage, you know?
Alright, anybody else have the committee records? No? Okay. Seeing none, we're going into executive session with some, we're here amongst the community.
So moved.
People, thank you very much.